Just like to remind everyone about the great Hutto cleanup has been rescheduled for this coming Saturday. It's usually in the spring, but we had to cancel it due to bad weather and so it's coming up this Saturday. So if anyone would like to come and participate, it's not too late. Even if you didn't sign up, come and hopefully it'll be a lot warmer than it was last year when we went out and almost got froze out. But get the word out too, and we're still doing the Golden Hutto Award where the neighborhood that has the most people who participate get the traveling Golden Hippo. I think Glenwood wants to keep it and so see if you can either unseat them or see if they get to keep it this year. So it should be a great event, so hope to see what there is Saturday. So, great meeting at Fritz Park. Check-ins at eight o'clock and the parking is actually at Hutto Elementary. So park at that elementary, walk through the pathway there and then check in at the pavilion at Fritz Park. There will be just a light breakfast served. It's really just kind of granola bars, I think, and water. And then a lunch served afterward with a raffle and just a lot of activities, so it should be great. There's also a junk roundup that's going to be available at the Ucheck Building. So if you have electronics, paper shredding, what else do we have, Rick? Brush, you know, just all kinds of just regular junk. No, no oil, paint, that kind of stuff, but pretty much everything else. So, thank you.
Okay. Next item is public comment. Any citizen wishing to speak during public comment may do so after completing the required registration form. In accordance with the Texas Attorney General opinions, any public comment that's made on an item that is not on the published final agenda will only be heard by the City Council. No formal action, discussion, deliberation, or comment will be made by the City Council. Comments must be courteous and respectful. Any person who violates these rules will have their speaking time ended immediately. Any person, including persons in the audience who acts in inappropriate or disruptive manner, may be asked to leave the City Council chambers. Each person providing public comment will be limited to three minutes. So when I call your name, please come up to the table and state your name and address and your three minutes will start and then you'll have the yellow light will signal you have 30 seconds left and when the red goes on, your time is up. First I have Robin Sutton.
So, two months ago. Robin Sutton, 505 East Street. Two months ago, this all kind of fell on my lap. I'm not used to all of this. I've never experienced it. I was naive. I was the one sleeping and not realizing the decisions that were being made for my city. So I want you to know about me. I'm a 21-year resident of Hutto. I put every part of my heart restoring 505 East. And I want to thank Councilman Rose and Councilman Gordon for understanding how passionate the people of Old Town feel about Old Town. And I want to give you a thank you for that and working with Mr. Wunsch to accommodate our needs. But I am also a woman that won't give up. I'm also a woman that will keep fighting for what's right. I am a woman that has integrity and doesn't mean disrespect. And I'm sorry if I disrespected anybody in this council. But I'm also a woman that formed a page of almost 300 people to fight for Hutto. And tonight, I'm here for them and I'm going to voice their concerns. I am not a woman who took a $75,000 check from the city to help with renovations of my house. I'm a woman that spent way more than that and got a check for 7,500 for which I'm grateful. And it was brought up again as if it's something that I owe somebody for and I'm offended Two nights ago, an 18-wheeler came down on Hutto Street. Hutto Street. And I wanted to bring the stick, but I didn't know if I'd be able to bring it in. But we got about that much pavement, that much pavement over a mud hole. And it was escorted by a police officer. And that is our fear in Old Town, that these streets are going to collapse because they're not being taken care of. And in the Old Town overlay, it says, I don't know, "We're going to take care of Old Town. We're going to put in sidewalks. We're going to take care of it." But we're only taking care of the part that leads to the co-op and to Perfect Game. That's all we care about. And that's what you're telling the people. I just want you to know. I'm fighting for Hutto. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next I have Caitlin Turner.
My name is Caitlin Turner. I live at 127 Dana Drive and I would like to defer my time to Robin Sutton.
So this is the last three minutes, I promise you guys. Last week, I went a little rogue and I apologize for that. So in all the information I've been gathering from almost 300 citizens of Hutto, voting citizens of Hutto, is their concerns are streets, safety, traffic. It is already almost impossible sometimes to get down 1660. We have Durango, Perfect Game and others, the other development that's going to go with that intersection and there's where are the trucks going to get through? We're still worried about that and hopefully at some point, we'll get down the road and we'll deal with that. But you know what the biggest concern is? The fact that last week, y'all voted to have financial disclosure happen. And it showed up on the agenda tonight. Last week, when I posted that we got a win, that the EDC and the city manager would have to do a financial disclosure, everybody thought, finally, they're listening to us. Finally. And it shows up again. Do you know what the citizens are saying now? What are they hiding from us? Why don't they want to submit that information? So, we want to know why during the period from January 1st, 2017 to December 31st, 2018, that we have paid McGinnis Lockridge $2,307,087 in legal services? That's what we want to know. We also want to know why we're paying $272,000 over a two-year period over public information requests, which we should be able to see. That's what we want to know. So as a body, I, representing 300 people, I want to know where your loyalty stands. They want to know where your loyalty stands. We want to open the can of worms. We want to open all of them. We want to know what's going on in our town and where our tax dollars are going because you keep raising our taxes, you keep raising the budget, and you keep giving raises to people that we don't even know where it's going to. So, in light of that, I'll share also on this spreadsheet, economic development EDC, $514,000. Heart of Texas Water Systems agreements, $155,000. That's way less than the PIA, which is wire water and, you know, we're paying more for water. And then personally, personal-related HR, $90,000. What is that about? And then general counsel, $700,000 in two years. And that's our money.
Time's up. Next I have Nancy Woodcock.
Ladies and gentlemen, Nancy Woodcock, 206 Dana Drive. Okay. Well, I'm just going to take a little sidestep if it's okay, just regarding today's voting on early voting. I went to three different places here in Hutto. I did not find one sign that said that we can go to such and such place or call for voting. And I was very upset. I called Board of Elections, you named my party, and I told them, I said, you know what, I think I'm feeling like we're being shut up, you know, that we're not allowed and the normal people who don't, well, everyday people who may not go to websites or have a computer or have access have no way to know that they think they can do early voting on where it's at. So I feel like people are not being allowed to voice their opinion and I'd like to know how come signs were not placed anywhere to go direct them or, you know, some places. So, are you allowed to answer or not?
We can clarify that the voting locations was set by Williamson County. We did not have control over the voting locations.
Right.
So the information and communication for the November, for this election comes from the Williamson County, does not come from the City Hall.
Right, but the main places that we do have-
But we did have a sign, I did see we have a sign out now.
On the main-
There is a sign on the front door, so-
-the Elections Department was responsible for-
Yeah.
But I heard it blew away because I did not see one thing.
Okay. There was one when I walked in and saw it, so.
Okay.
But that did, communication and setting those locations is not, this is all a county election, so it's all driven by the county, not by the city.
All right, thank you. Okay, well, I would like to, first, I'd like to thank Mike Snyder and Tana Rose last week for bringing up very, very, very important and very good questions that I'd like to see answered as well. And then some of it was regarding the monies that were set aside a couple of meetings ago for the Lakeside Estate sidewalks and we never got an answer as to how much and when are we going to take care of that? So, that's another question.
Again, we got that, I think, we'll be bringing that back in November to an update to the council in the November election, November council meeting.
All right. And, let's see here. Okay, and going back to the annexing of the Pfeiffer and Covered Bridge, that, it was annexed, but it wasn't approved by the PZ, is that correct?
That I'm not sure. I'm not sure on that one.
That was supposed to be September the 5th.
I think we postponed the annex, this next up in our annexation. That was what was postponed at the last meeting.
Right. And when is that going to be brought up?
I, we don't, it's up to developer when that comes back to the council.
And we have five houses just on Dana Drive that I could see that just went up for sale like that because of what's happening here. I've been going door to door, speaking, driving around, talking to all my neighbors and they're quite upset and it's causing a lot of duress. I have a, I don't know if they're here tonight, but there's someone who's living here.
Your time's up.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Next I have Blair Woodcock.
Good evening. Blair Woodcock, 206 Dana Drive. I came into these meetings, I've been to several of them, also some meetings among the neighbors. So I came into the meeting with a couple of assumptions. One is you can't fight City Hall. And I told my wife that. I'm an optimist, so I am hopeful that that isn't a done deal and that assumption doesn't have to be in stone. My other assumption was assume good intent, which is what I do for all of you. And I hope that won't be under question either. But I am, I am discussing tonight the Covered Bridge development and also the CATS extension and the hotel and all the things that are discussed about on 685. So, I don't know what goes on here when we've left, but I, I just, you know, there's a number of issues that we had, of course, that we have been discussing and I'm still, I'm still concerned about them. One is the small streets on Dana Drive, then the lack of sidewalks and the, you know, the kids that have to walk on the streets without a real place to walk, the sewer that's going in by the park. And, you know, a lot of things are said here that, for example, I remember the first meeting I came to, it was said that, oh, we could take money from something and put in the sidewalks. Yeah, so that's a concern is that, that seems easy to say, but I don't know where that stands. And also, the idea that people in Lakeside Estates would not have to pay for the new sewer treatment thing that's going to alleviate our relationship with Flugerville or whatever the situation was. The thing that you said, Mr. Snyder, a couple nights ago, that if, if you lived in Lakeside Estates, you would be upset, you wouldn't want to live in Lakeside Estates was something like what you said. I'm not quoting verbatim, but it makes me concerned because we've been in Lakeside Estates for four years now and, I see the yellow light, but my son lives in Pennsylvania. He lives in a little town called Lititz. It is well-known, it's among the most desirable locations in the state because it's in Lancaster County, Amish country. They took care of making it a really nice place. Where I used to work, the next town over, the building that I worked in had a broken window for months and months, which doesn't bode well. I don't want this city to be like that. I want it to be like Lititz. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is 6A, consideration of possible action on the final reading of ordinance amending Code of Ordinances, 2014 edition as amended. Chapter 16, Article 16 dot 02 Unified Development Code, UDC Chapter 3, Section 10 dot 303 zoning district. Section 10 dot 303 dot 71B1, 10 dot 304 permitted uses, 10 dot 304 dot 5 residential uses, 10 dot 304 dot 6 commercial retail uses, 10 dot 304 dot 7 industrial uses, 10 dot 304 dot 8 institutional civic uses, 10 dot 304 dot 9 temporary uses, 10 dot 304 dot 10 accessory uses, 10 dot 306 residential uses, 10 dot 307 commercial and retail uses, 10 dot 308 industrial uses, 10 dot 309 institutional civic uses, and 10 dot 310 temporary uses, 10 dot 311 accessory uses. I do have one person sign up to speak on that first, so I've got Robin Sutton.
So I would like to speak about 10 dot 303 point 15, the historic district overlay. And here it says, "Any existing designated historic landmark site or district in the city, when this code is adopted, is designated as H overlay. Special standards for existing sites will continue to apply to the H overlay." We fought for this, which was already in writing. My concern is with the co-op district, we've already tore down a historic contributing structure, already. And the next one that thankfully they're still renegotiating is Hutto Bible Church Office, which is a historic designated structure. So I'm just curious, are we going to let that building get torn down in the name of development of the co-op district? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You may recall, this actually came to you last week for a second reading, but there was still a question on the dark skies ordinance. So staff went back and updated the language to read very specifically the desires for the ordinance is really just to ensure, I'll read it verbatim, that all outdoor lighting must be fully shielded, hooded, and cannot, light cannot trespass on any adjacent property, which was really the intent of adding dark skies ordinance. We wanted to be, instead of having anybody have to guess what we meant by that, we went ahead and spelled it out completely, but this is exactly what we're looking for. This really does just deal with some of the commercial uses directly adjacent to single-family residential in that B1 district. So I think, hopefully, if you have any questions on this one, I'm hoping that that answers all the questions that we've had on the two other readings.
Do I have a motion?
I was just going to say, thanks for going back and kind of going through that and clarifying. Quick question on what Robin said. It's my understanding, if the Bible Church Office is a historical structure, would that have to go through HPC, right, in order to get demolished?
I don't believe so at this point because it was designated as a redevelopment area when these zoning was approved several years ago by council. So I think that takes precedence. I know that we could look into something, but I don't believe it does. I know the other one was deemed culturally, I think, it wasn't a historic structure designation, it was a culturally significant designation, although the house was in kind of severe disrepair.
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hines, second by Councilmember Martinez. Any other question or discussion? Call for vote.
Mayor Goff.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott Rose.
Aye.
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Tana Rose.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Next item is 6B, consideration of possible action on a second reading of an ordinance amending the City of Hutto Code of Ordinances, 2014 edition, Appendix A, Fee Schedule, Article 3 dot 000, Solid Waste Collection.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is the second and final reading for the ordinance to amend the fee schedule. Again, August 15th, council did approve a resolution to amend the Outclassant Disposal Contract for CPI Index Increase. The red line reflects the change in the schedule for the different services and I'm glad to take any questions if you have any at this time. And this will go into effect after this reading, for the next billing cycle, will reflect this change.
Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Councilmember Scott Rose, second. Second by Mayor Pro Tim Hines.
Before we vote, I just got a question. I read through, I don't know why I did, but I read through the whole thing. And I found some other areas that have some omissions and just, I think, some corrections that need to be made. They don't relate to this, so I didn't want to hold this vote up. But what's the process of us kind of correcting other things that I find?
So I actually have, I actually have some of my staff looking over those that are related to finance.
Okay.
As well as the city secretary's staff, they're looking over. So we'll bring one change at one time with all of those changes.
Okay.
We're also having the other departments look at fee schedules and make sure everything's in line with what it's supposed to be. So we'll bring it at one time.
So the things, I'm sorry, the things that I noticed, too, should I send those to them?
That would be great.
Emily, okay. All right.
Any other question?
So, I just want to follow up from last week. And I'm going to ask this, and I'm going to ask it towards the attorney and Tom. Should we be voting on a fee increase when the person involved in the fee increase, I've got strong credible evidence, is involved in the investigation with Mike Snyder? Should we be voting on this?
We're not voting for the increase. We're voting to amend the fee schedule. It's already, the fee increase has already been voted on.
So should we have voted on that back then, then? I mean, you can't have one without the other. So what if we don't vote to increase the fee schedule?
Okay. I hate to say this, but I'm not following you.
How does it relate, one relative to the other?
Well, if the person's involved in an investigation, then why are we voting on a potential, what I would deem a conflict of interest with this? So, I'm not really comfortable voting on an increase when the person who could be making the allegation could be involved in this.
But the amount that you're voting on, it's not tied to any company. I mean, if you had company ABC doing this, this would be the fee that we'd be charging.
Yeah, it's an, it's across the board.
We're approving the fee for solid waste collection regardless of who, the ordinance says this is what the fee's going to be.
It's an across-the-board application.
Which matches a contract that we voted upon, right? I mean, we don't set the fee schedule and go back and grant the contract, do we? Or do we match the fee schedule to the contract?
There's two things going on. What you're voting on right now is an across-the-board fee schedule that would apply regardless of who it applies to. I mean, it's, it is objective, so if you, if you, if it applies to you, you have to, you have to comply, okay? Relative to a particular contract, I mean, you can't hold up city business because there's a possibility that somebody may have been a witness relative to a ethics dispute. So, I don't think the entire council would have been, aside from that, councils, the entire council's not forced to recuse themselves from voting on a contract because somebody involved with that contract may be a witness involved in an ethics dispute? No, that's-
I'm not asking if we should recuse, I'm asking if we should delay until the investigation's finalized.
No. I, no, that, there's no, the council doesn't have to do that on this item for sure, on the contract either, although the contract's not before us right now. There wasn't an obligation to withhold and in fact, you could argue that if you didn't vote on the contract, that's some sort of retaliatory action against the person.
Why don't we have information on the investigation?
The investigation's ongoing and it's been conducted by a lawyer-
Stick to, stick to the topic. The topic is whether or not, I mean, we've got the ordinance before us.
Okay, there's-
The ordinance basically is setting the price.
Yeah.
The rate. And it's not stating in the ordinance any, who's collecting the waste, anything like that. All you're approving here is the collection fee, what the fee for solid waste collection is, what the ordinance for that fee is going to be.
And there's no, to answer your, answer your question, there's no conflict. And I apologize, we shouldn't have gone into the contract at all, but there's, there's no conflict here.
Any other question? Call for vote.
Councilmember Scott Rose.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Mayor Goff.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Tana Rose.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Next item is 7A, a resolution of City Hutto, Texas directing setting for a hearing, of a hearing for consideration of a tax increment reinvestment zone and a preparation preliminary reinvestment zone financing plan and other documents in conjunction with consideration of the establishment of the zone.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item tonight is really intended to be a high-level presentation for you, the first step towards the creation of a tax increment reinvestment zone or TERs for the Sports and Health District. Again, the action tonight is, the request is just to set a public hearing date, however, there are some preliminary information that we have for you to this point. So through our comprehensive plan and future land use map updates, City Council adopted some growth corridors. There were several growth corridors throughout the city that identified areas where infrastructure would need to be paid its special attention to, to support economic development in these core areas, one of which was our downtown area. So, one of the ways that we've addressed that, of course, is through, with the creation of the co-op district. We also have improvements to our main downtown area and then now with the Sports and Health District, we have the opportunity to expand that to the east and create what we would call a full central business district. Looking at the actual proposed project boundary for the Sports and Health District, for the TERs specifically, that boundary is shown on those maps in red. And I'll have a slide later that talks a little bit more about the development. But what you see on your screen now is the flood plain in the, on the one map that shows flood plain due to Cottonwood Creek that currently covers the property, as well as there is a power line that crosses and encumbers the northern tract north of Major Lane. The middle image is an image of some flooding that Cottonwood Creek experiences on the Fritz Park side. And the other map shows the drainage flows and how the land within this project boundary generally drains towards Cottonwood Creek. So through development of the site, the developer would take a look and study these drainage flows and be able to mitigate that impact, whether through, you know, different options such as increased detention, underground storage, those kinds of measures that would be studied as the development were to move forward. The proposed TERs zone, or again, tax increment reinvestment zone, is approximately 460 acres. Again, that map there shows the proposed boundary in red. With the tax increment reinvestment zone, what the city is able to do is to capture the incremental ad valorem taxes that is incurred on the property through the resulted development and use that funds to help fund qualified public improvements. So through this, we would essentially be creating a district, taking the value that it is today, taking, and then taking that incremental ad valorem to go towards the public infrastructure costs associated with the project. On your screen currently is the concept plan that is being worked on, including comments that we've already received from the public on this. As of right now, the proposed plan has almost 600,000 square feet of- has almost six hundred thousand square feet of proposed retail and office space, along with eight hundred units of multifamily and five hundred keys or units of hotel space. Again, these are images that we did take forward during that town hall meeting of what type of development we'd be looking at here, as well as a roadway network that is, again, still being reviewed at this time. One thing that I did want to clarify as well is that, as with our other PIDs and the TERs, such as the Co-op District, the bond that would be associated with this project would be issued by a third party. The city would not be the issuer on this, and therefore, this would be non-recourse to the city. On your screen also is the amount of qualified costs for public improvement that come to approximately two hundred and thirty-two million. These are, again, we're in the very preliminary stages of this, so this is just a preliminary draft plan for your consideration. We would still be working through exactly how much public improvement cost would be funded and any type of contribution from the city. Right now, the plan, draft plan, has seventy-five percent of the incremental ad valorem taxes within the project boundary only for a term of thirty years to assist with funding of certain public infrastructure improvements.
Who's the third-party issuer?
So, the third-party issuer, we have different ones that we use. Right now, we're looking at the Arizona IDA to be the third-party issuer for this one, which would be similar to what we've done on other deals.
And would that go through the LGC, then?
Yes, the LGC, same, same structure.
Not to interrupt you, on that last slide, it says the city's proposed contribution. I don't know, at some point, I guess, we said we could, back in June, we could talk about the, the development agreement, but from what I read in there, there's a lot more than ad valorem taxes that the city's contributing.
Yeah. So, what I'll dig here, too, is this, only the TERs, there are a number of different streams that we'd be looking at, right? So, when we went over the schedule, there were a couple different things. We have the TERs, and we have the PID, and the three eighty agreements that we talked about. The TERs, what we're looking at right now is that that would only be for the ad valorem taxes. Some of those other streams would come through those other mechanisms that we talked about, such as the PID or the three eighty agreement. So, what you see in the proposed draft plan, which would come back to you again as a preliminary plan for you to approve, and then we'd work through a final financing plan after that, is where we would set just the contribution of the ad valorem. And then you would have the opportunity through the PID and the three eighty agreement to look at those other revenue streams and how much contribution is there with each of those mechanisms.
Okay, and when would we start talking, when would the conversation start on the other?
Yeah. So, pretty, up until December, that first week in December, right now, what we're doing is just establishing the districts. So, you're essentially just creating the shells of these, where you're creating the shell of the TERs, and you'd be creating the shell of the PID. At your November seventh council meeting, you'll be able to consider the three eighty agreement, as well as the resolution to move forward with talking to the county about the three eighty-one agreement. The EDC would consider, CDC would consider their sales tax contribution component of that, at which point the council would have to ratify that action as well. And then also consideration of the ESD agreement with that portion of the sales tax. So, those are the different mechanisms. Most of that will come to you on November seventh.
The next council meeting.
Yes. And then, but again, your TERs, actual TERs contribution, that's something that, at this point, we would only be working through a preliminary plan, and then we'd come back after December on a final plan, at which point you'd be able to go through your agreements to actually formally adopt that contribution. So, at this time, really just setting the shells.
Shells. May I ask for some to be, some information put into the next council meeting regarding those districts?
Okay.
And what I'm more looking is, I guess, starting with what we anticipate the value, the property value to be tax-wise, that where we could know twenty-five percent of nothing right now is something, but what is that, twenty-five percent? What's the seventy-five percent? And then also, sales tax, what we're looking at, sales tax generating, because a lot of the, you've got like, I like to see like gate revenue, anticipated gate revenues, ticket revenues, parking revenues, and where I'm going with this says, the one thing I learned on the rollback tax, kind of training I went through, was that there's, there's two mechanisms that really drive down people's rollback rates, one being an increase in sales taxes, and the other being an increase in the growth of property tax. And so, as I was looking through this, I started to wonder, with, there's going to, in five years, I anticipate this thing being built out in a dramatic increase in sales taxes and property taxes, and, and so that's wonderful. That's going to put tremendous pressure to lower people's tax rate. And in doing that, the way the state has it set up, that drop in rates, we collect less property tax from the public, and so that's good. And we offset that less property tax with the increase in sales taxes and growth in property tax. But then, as I was reading the agreement, what I don't know, because it's pretty broad, is how much of that gain we're giving back away? Because if what we do drives down people's property taxes dramatically, that's great, except for we won't have the benefit of the tax money come in, because we've earmarked it to give it all back out to pay for the development. So, in essence, there's a chance that because Hutto is small enough, and this is such a big development, that we could potentially reduce our income in five or six years. And so, what I'd like to is kind of see some projections to where, as we're voting on this, I don't, I don't panic and stay awake at night or anything.
Okay, no problem.
So, that's a good question.
Yeah.
Great articulation of how that
Yeah.
sales tax impacts the property tax way. We're finalizing part of that negotiation now. What we're planning to do is to come to the council with the SAP, and the SAP will actually outline in it, you know, all of the revenue categories, and what we're, what we're using to proactively invest in the public infrastructure. And that aligns, though, with the preliminary budget that Jess is outlining here. I don't know if you can flip to that, Jess?
I'll go back.
But that, that aligns there. So, when you look at that preliminary budget there, what we effectively are doing is we're using future, you know, revenue from the property, you know, obviously, as you said, you know, twenty-five percent of something is better than twenty-five percent of nothing. We're using that projected seventy-five percent, where the city will end up owning the convention center, the city will own the ball fields, the city will own all of the infrastructure that's outlined here, including all the different attractions. But really, what we, what I think, what you really got to see to get to, I think, the nexus of how the twenty-five percent that we do get, how that will impact our ability to drive down the property tax calculation. The offset of that is the actual revenue projection on all categories, and also to the, the capacity study and analysis, Jess, that we, that we're still negotiating around the edges on. Those are the two that I think get you to really start to look at that impact, which we're quite not finished with yet, but we should be. I think we should be in a short haul. I've got a couple of issues with it. I want to try to finish it, but I think, you know, Jess, what we might want to do is, when are we bringing the, I know we're not coming to council with the SAP until February?
Yeah, it'll be early next year that we'd be working on the preliminary SAP, because from now until December, it's just the, the boundaries.
Okay.
But, just so the public knows, what, when you say SAP, what is?
That's the Service and Assessment Plan. So, that is the one that talks about all of, it sets the boundary of the PID, and it talks about all of the qualified costs that that dollar amount is going to fund. And then it talks about how, it actually lays out a full schedule of how those, each stream is occurring in each year of the development of the project. So, you're actually able to follow line by line in each year and see what each contribution would be.
It's just...
So, the reason we don't have it right now, though, is because I've had to order an appraisal of the current properties, as well as, we've had to order, we're going to have to have a third party to actually analyze the revenue projections. The, it's required as a part of the municipal bond structure that, before we go to the market, we always have to have an appraisal, a third-party analysis of, you know, someone other than us who's looking at it. We're ordering that, too, and that can take, to get that information back, can take sometimes six weeks or so. And so, that's, that's the delay in being able to give you that.
And just to clarify, my concern's not with this two hundred million, because that obviously doesn't pay taxes. It's more the concern of the six hundred million in additional development through hotels, retail, all that that's coming. The pressure that puts on, I mean, because the one thing we learned is two million, this year we learned two million in sales tax is a nickel on our rollback rate. And so, with quick math, if we generated, you know, a million dollars in five years on our additional sales tax revenue, all things being equal, we would see a two and a half cent decrease in our rollback rate, which is great, as long as we offset it with keeping some of the money. So, it's just more trying to figure out between what we're taking in, giving away, and the state forcing us to reduce our rate, what is that all going to come out to? Because it gets, it gets tough to explain, and yeah, I just want to make sure that we don't have a, we don't, this is a great deal, and if we do it right, it's a way to drive down the cost of living in Hutto. If we do it wrong, we have a water contract.
I've taken your notes here, too, so...
All right, thanks.
No problem.
I think we're far enough along in this now, where, I mean, I was able to go online and read the master development agreement, the multi-party development agreements. Those are posted out there now, read through, you know, this proposal here, and I think what would really, I think, help me and help all of us, is if we were able to schedule a work session where we could all kind of go through all of our questions. I've got a ton of questions after reading all this, right? And, I mean, the Mike, the first time I read through it, you know, seventy-five percent given back into the, into the reinvestment, and I'm thinking, well, that's, that's leaving us a pretty small percentage. How are we going to make that up? Where else are we going to make it up? It looks like there's a lot of preliminary stuff still in here where we haven't hammered out, you know, the agreements with parking and with the gate fees, and that's still to be determined, right? But I would really love to see us, as a council, to schedule some kind of a work session.
It's a good idea.
We could just kind of hammer through things and then ask questions, because questions that I ask, you know, Councilman Snyder, that may prompt a question from him, or, or...
Yeah, at the same time, I think we need to have bond, I mean, we need to schedule, once you've got the numbers all together, we've got bond counsel, bond counsel there, the attorneys, I mean, we need to have everybody that can answer all those questions.
Yeah, and we always try to do that on the bigger deals. This is one we definitely need to do that on. I just want to say, when you look at the analysis, though, that's coming to you, think of it this way, you're not giving anything away.
Right, it's reinvesting back in, but...
Yeah, because those assets that's paid for is going to go on your balance sheet. So, but we do, it'd be really good. I think we're at a point now, only thing I kind of want to wait on is that, that appraisal, and I don't, Jess, when is that appraisal going to be back? Do we know?
Oh, we probably got another three weeks or so before.
Okay, I just want to get that because...
And again, this, this agenda item here, I mean, I think we're kind of getting into a little bit, we will have the opportunity, and I think that's a good point, is at some point, we'll have a work session where we can go through and have all that. But again, the is, the only item before us this evening is setting the date for the public hearing.
That's correct.
We're not approving anything on dollars, anything. All we're doing is saying, here's the date for the public hearing.
Yep.
So, I think, just to clarify that.
Absolutely. So, yes, tonight's just the resolution to set the public hearing. The next steps after that related to the TERs district are on November seventh, to have the public hearing and first reading to establish the district boundary. Then on November twenty-first, you'd have your public hearing and second reading to establish that boundary. At that point, then we'd go and start working through the creation of the board, as well as the consideration in action on the final project and financing plan. So, similar process to how we did on the Co-op, just kind of laying that out for you here. And this process is intertwined. Those are the vehicles, but this lays out that TERs component for you.
So, we just need a motion to set the public hearing for the seventh?
November seventh.
I've got more questions. Why is the TERs district so much bigger than the project plan? Because you've got the land with eminent domain, and then you've got the land east of one thirty-two, which never has really been discussed, yet it's part of this TERs boundary map.
So, there, there is a portion of the project on the concept plan that does go on the other side of one thirty-two as it sits today. So, that area where you see Limerloop and those eastern ball fields are part of that project area. On the south side of seventy-nine, that's where we've been looking to put the Public Justice Center that we have there as well. So, we wanted to go ahead and capture that larger TERs area.
Yeah, I think the short answer is that the geographic boundaries have expanded with the new developer. And, and, you know, so that's the short answer.
So, is the land acquired then yet?
So, the TERs allows us to just establish bigger boundaries. The land under here is either acquired or under contract in the process of going through that district. But a TERs does allow for...
I got that. The only property that's not already acquired is subject to the condemnation. The condemnation special commissioners' hearing is set for early November. So, at that time, three folks appointed by the, three real estate professionals appointed by the County Court of Law judge will listen to the testimony from both sides and set a valuation. Immediately after that, let's just, whatever that number is that they set, if the city then posts that amount, we are effectively the owners of the property. Now, we can continue to litigate with the tacklements over, and they can even have a jury trial over what the value of the land is, but after the special commissioners' hearing in the first week in November, we'll know how much the county has to, the city has to post in order to, to become the owner of the property and be able to proceed.
So, I'm going to ask a litigation question that you may not want to answer, but have they ruled on the condemnation piece?
The, the first action in the condemnation piece is the special commissioners' hearing, which is where the value gets set for us to take possession.
And that was where they would decide whether we could take possession or not. It would be, it's the same thing, right?
The only thing, the only thing the special commissioners decide is what's the value. They set a value, they don't get into anything other than value. They post, they determine value, and then we post it and take possession.
Do I have a motion?
May I make a motion to direct public hearings for November seventh and November twenty-first for consideration of a tax increment reinvestment zone preparation preliminary reinvestment zone financing plan and other documents in connection with consideration of establishment of the zone?
Second.
So, a motion by Councilmember Scott Rose, second by Councilmember Martinez, sets the public hearings for the first, for the seventh and the twenty-first. Any other question or discussion?
I've got two. One, can I get a list, or can I get those slides that just had all the meetings we're going to be having from last one? Just because I don't remember where it was, that four-hundred-page packet we had. And then, the second one is, and I know we talked about all the financing stuff, is there a way I can get where the two hundred and thirty-two million is being estimated from? I mean, what I mean is, each line item, how those numbers were drawn up. I'm looking for the math or the analysis behind how each one was determined to be that amount. And then one other thing on that is, why each of the line items are in there?
Got it.
Any other question? Call for vote?
Mayor Goff.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott Rose.
Aye.
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Tina Rose.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Next item is eight A, consideration of the possible appointments to city boards and commissions. Do we have any appointments?
I don't have any appointments, but some citizens have questioned if there is a conflict of interest for citizens serving on multiple committees. I don't know that, I mean, I looked at a few. There's a few citizens that are serving on multiple committees, but I wasn't sure. It didn't look like there would be a conflict of, between the committees other than maybe somebody serving on both planning and zoning and the zoning, the ZBA, where there...
That'd have to be on a... That'd have to be on a, on a case-by-case basis that you'd have to look at. The mere fact that you're serving on the parks board and the library board doesn't...
Right, those did...
That's not gonna matter. Now, there's, there's, this beyond the, beyond the, just the conflict issue, you could have, do you really want somebody on P and Z who's on EDC? May, maybe not, you know? But there's not a, because you're on two boards, you have to have a conflict. That, that, that is not true.
Right, yeah, and I agree with that. I mean, I, I, I mean, the only one that looked to me like, the, so you got planning and zoning, which makes decisions for planning and zoning, and you got the zoning board of adjustments who could go back and adjust what P and Z did, and if you got the same person serving on both of those, I, I just, I just wanted to ask the question, I didn't know.
I don't know that it's a conflict, but it certainly, you want each entity to operate independently based on its own best judgment, so let, let's say I'm on P and Z and something comes before zoning board of adjustments, it's not like I'm walking in and hearing it for the first time. I, I've already been exposed to it, and I may be predetermined to it. I don't know that that's a conflict, I just don't think it really serves the purpose of having independent boards.
Sure, okay, no, it makes sense, I just, it didn't seem like a problem to me, but I just wanted to get a legal opinion on that.
I, I think there could actually, I mean, now you could argue, if one or two members are from the planning, zoning and zoning board, there's some value because they, they know where the planning and zoning's kind of thought was and kinda can relay that. If it, if it's a majority, or if the majority control both boards, then it's gonna be a little more questioning, but one member or two members, I'd actually bring some value because they can kinda say, here's what the discussion of the planning and zoning was.
Well, to that, I, I don't know who's in charge of it, but I noticed there's a lot of meeting minutes that aren't, I don't know if they're not being approved or posted, but it'd be nice if, if, to your point, if one commission would have the opportunity to see what the minutes were of the previous, whatever commission that it went through, to where they could read, cause sometimes things come to us, and they just had a planning commission on a Tuesday, let's say, and we don't, we just know the vote, we don't know what the discussion was, or what some of the highlights of the issues were unless the public reaches out to us, and so sometimes...
Well, I think, I think that's where the chairperson of the planning and zoning typically comes and relays the information from, and makes the recommendation from the planning and zoning to us and relays the information. But the meeting minutes won't be approved until, posted until they get approved by the, that board at the next, at their next meeting.
Yeah, I think they're either not being approved on a regular basis, or not being posted after, after they're approved.
Cause if they meet monthly, they should meet the next month, they should approve it, and then it should be posted thereafter, so within a month they should be on there.
There's something like three or four months behind.
Yeah, so it sounds like something's not.
To where I didn't know who, if that's up to the board chair, the vice, I don't know how the boards work, but...
So do I have any possible appointments?
I just have one last question. So the library board, we're good to nominate people from the ISD district jurisdiction?
I believe it was a couple meetings ago that, that you agreed that there was not a boundary for that board.
Well, the ISD, the ISD's the boundary.
Yeah, that's not...
Yeah, we approved that at last meeting.
So we're good to do that moving forward?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, next item is 8B.
Mayor, I'm gonna, I'm gonna end up forgetting to do this, but I'd like to add, or I'd like to suggest an item be added next week, or the next meeting's agenda, and this goes into, this starts from last week, but what I'd like to see added to our next agenda is a consideration and possible action, and regarding a forensic audit of our city council travel and expense reimbursements, of the city managers' travel and expense reimbursements in the city in general. This is a basic discussion of that needs to be done, and how that would be, how we would go on with that.
Can you just submit that in writing with a second to get it on the agenda?
Person seconds it here, and then it's on...
Well, we really don't have it, I mean, we keep throwing these things, you guys keep doing this and throwing this out there in the middle of the meeting, but we don't have it on the agenda item.
The reason, the reason I did...
Our protocol says that if you want an item on the agenda, is that you submit it in writing with a second to the city manager and the mayor, and then we'll add it on the agenda.
And that's not happening. So the state law allows a person to make a motion, cause it's not an action motion, to make a motion to add something, and with a second it gets added. If I felt confident that by emailing I would get things on the agenda, I would do that, but since I don't, I feel I have to do it this way.
Okay, so I've got a motion from Mike.
Second.
Second, Mike. Doesn't require a vote.
And one other item I'd like to add is consideration and possible action regarding update on the 2017 EDC investigation. I haven't heard about that since I lived here, so I know it started, I just, I don't know, so, I'd like an update on that.
Second, Alex.
And quite a personal approach, I don't... I would just say if you guys are gonna talk, I'd like to know what, not that I'm being nosy, but I'd like to know since we're a public meeting, what, what exactly he's saying, if I'm doing something right or wrong, or...
No, no, there wasn't any concern that you had done anything wrong. I was literally confirming something that I thought was true, which is, that we'll discuss next week relative to your last question.
Okay.
As to, and it was just, who's actually conducting the investigation?
Oh, it was, okay.
I was trying to confirm something.
That's like, okay. Next item is 8B, consideration and possible action authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an amendment to the city manager's contract. I do have one person signed up to speak on that, Robin Sutton.
Hi, y'all. So again, I'm representing almost 300 taxpaying citizens of Hutto when I say this. So when a city manager is hired and interviewed, who comes together and makes the decision to hire a city manager?
City council.
City council, right?
Yes.
Right. So why are we giving the mayor sole responsibility to negotiate his contract? Can you answer that?
That's, well, the discussion occurred during this, but it's giving, it basically giving the mayor the authorization to sign whatever the council agrees to.
Okay, so you're, so what you're saying is, Mayor Gall, that you get...
I can't, I can't sign, make any changes to the contract without the council's approval.
That's not what the agenda item says.
Well, then let's, we've gotta have that discussion, I mean, you're kinda getting ahead of us on the...
Okay, so that doesn't make sense to the citizens who have elected these officials to represent us. If one person gets to make a decision on negotiating a contract for someone that works for you and works for us, when we just, well, I didn't approve it, but y'all approved 1.8 million dollars in raises. So are we giving a raise? I mean, we don't know, we don't know what y'all are doing, we don't know where the money's going. We have so many public records that are being held from us, which I wanna add to the agenda, or, you know, why are we getting blocked from public information? Why are we spending 272,000 dollars to keep information from us and getting redacted invoices? That's what I wanna know from you guys, cause we elected you. The citizen of Hutto elected you to represent us. So I don't want some back-room conversation negotiating a contract for someone that doesn't represent the city. And I think everyone on council should be part of that, I think everyone should have a say in that.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I might, this language is relatively standard language used by cities, counties, and school districts. The language doesn't provide that passing anything will enable the mayor on his own to negotiate and execute a contract. Any changes to any contract and the terms of every contract have to be approved by the city council as a whole. I'm, I'm not saying that's the most articulate language in the world, and we could clearly change it, but all that language in, in this instance and every instance says is, if the council as a whole approves a change to a contract, or approves the terms of a contract, then the mayor is authorized to negotiate an agreement which memorializes the approved terms and execute that agreement that memorializes the approved terms. So under no circumstances is the mayor authorized to, to execute in any agreement that's not been approved by the council as a whole.
I'm not strongly disagree with that.
Mayor, I'm gonna make a question to... According, according to...
Point of order, I was, I was talking.
According to statute, as, as an employee of the city, I get the opportunity to ask that this matter be discussed in executive session, I so do, force and request that pursuant to my rights.
Okay, what's your question?
Okay, my question is more of a statement. The reason I disagree with you, Mr. City Attorney, is we had a item come up that was, people argued back and forth very much about giving any and all approval for someone to, for the city manager to negotiate and execute development agreements. And by, usually buying land is, and spending money is a city council has to approve each time. And what I've been told since then is because we voted to give the city manager any and all, negotiate and execute those agreements, we've pretty much handed over all of our decision-making, because, you shaking your head, but since then, we've, we've purchased land, and at no point has the council voted on money being spent.
Okay, cool.
So this here reminds me of the same way, I'm not saying Mayor Gall is going to go out and negotiate a million-dollar increase in salary, but if this got, if this were to get passed...
Again, it's, it's an agenda item, the, whatever the motion is, that's what's gonna drive, drive the direction.
If someone says, some, and then it says, call the vote, and we vote, and it goes down six to one, the way it's written, you're negotiating and executing an amendment, and the council's not part of that.
Okay, well, wait, I think we've, I think we've lost, I think we've lost touch with 8B, okay? And, and, Councilmember Snyder, I'm not suggesting that you're, that this isn't a point that the council ultimately wants to address, but that's really a council protocol issue, where we, where you guys can sort out how you want to handle any authorization to negotiate and execute any contract. I mean, 8B is simply consideration and possible action authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an amendment to the city manager's contract. I was literally as the, Councilmember Rose and I were earlier talking about whether it's better for staff to answer questions from public comment, or whether it's better from the dais. My view is, when, when the public asks a question, if you're gonna respond, it's better to come from staff, cause we're not gonna vote on anything, okay? So I was really trying to implement what Councilmember Tanner Rose and I had been talking about earlier. But the, the, the only agenda item now is consideration and possible action on the, the authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute amendment to the city manager's contract, and that's what we really need to hold the, the discussion between the council members, too. If you want that issue to be brought up, I, I'd call it a council protocol issue, and I think it's a reasonable matter to do it directly.
So, so, hold on, hold, hold on. We have a request by the city manager to take this discussion regarding his contract into executive session.
Yeah, according to state law, yes.
I mean, we've got the, there's no sense debating the agenda item, it's, it's the emotion, the, it really comes down to the action and the motion, cause the agenda's the, there's no power behind the agenda item.
And I've got just one general question.
We just made an hour, we may come back, so it's okay with me, I mean...
I just wanna ask one question, it has nothing to do with the contract, I just wanna know, who put the item on the agenda, and when was it placed on the agenda?
I requested it.
Okay, cause council protocol has been a hold to me, this is big, when did you request it?
I would have to look.
I mean, generals, the reason I say it is...
It was after our last meeting.
Okay, now, see, that, that bothers me.
So how did it get on the agenda?
Right, cause per council protocol, you have to ask on the Tuesday before the meeting to get it on, so you gotta have like a 10-day window, which is...
So if you asked on Fri, I, cause I've been shot down trying to get stuff on the agenda, asking after the Tuesday prior, so, that's why I was, and it's probably not on this agenda item, but that's my issue.
It's probably a session to have a...
So Mayor, getting back on topic, as far as 8B is concerned, and the, the question of the validity of the verbiage, I would make a motion to table 8B until the next meeting with proper verbiage.
Second.
I would say we can...
Hold on, hold on, I've got a motion by Councilmember Scott Rose.
Wouldn't it be wise for me to talk to you about what amendment I'm requesting? So you could think about it.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Before we get, I've got a motion on the table, to table, I've got a motion by Councilmember Scott Rose, and seconded by Councilmember Tanner Rose to table this item to, next meeting for clarification of verbiage. Questions on the motion?
Can we not, can we not just amend this item when we come out of the executive session?
You could, no, you can't amend the item. You can clearly state what action you want taken under the item, but you can't amend the item.
But you...
Sure, we do it all the time?
Well, we do it all the time, how can you not amend an item?
You can amend a motion.
Well, yeah, if the, if the motion's made, it's the mayor do this, and I can say, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to amend that the city council has, has to buy in on it and execute and negotiate as well.
No, you could make that motion, I, I thought you were saying, can you amend the posting?
No.
You can't amend, okay, then I misunderstood.
What I'm saying is, there's no reason to table this, if we're gonna go out to discussion and come back, and then...
So I've, I've got a motion right now to table it, that's the question, is there questions on that motion to table?
Yeah, my question is, if that motion passes, can we, we cannot go back and discuss it.
Correct. If you table it, you can't discuss it.
Correct.
Which I think the city manager would like to talk to.
So, I have a, I have a motion, any questions on the motion?
I would just say we can sit in the right.
Call the vote.
Mayor Gall?
Nay.
Mayor Protem Heinz?
Nay.
Councilmember Scott Rose?
Aye.
Councilmember Snyder?
Nay.
Councilmember Gordon?
Nay.
Councilmember Martinez? Nay. Councilmember Tanner Rose?
Aye.
Motion passes, five to two, the motion fails, five to two. So now we'll go back in this, and since the, since the city manager has requested us an executive session, we'll go into executive, executive session at 8:09 PM.
Mayor, can I, can I make one observation? I don't know if anybody's here just for 8C, but you might wanna cover 8C in case somebody's here just for 8C, so that they can leave and not have to wait after the executive session.
We're not gonna be that long in the executive session, I don't think. So...
How do you guys know we're not gonna be back there that long? Unless you know something I don't.
So I'm, we're going back into executive session at 8:09 PM under section 551.074, deliberations regarding personnel matters. 1:01 PM, no action was taken in executive session. Any motions on item 8B?
Hold on.
So do we have a motion, or?
Yeah, I just need to figure out how to word it. I didn't bring it up with me. So I make, Mayor, I'm gonna make a motion that we authorize you to amend section 3.2, the non-competition agreement in the city manager's contract, to reflect that should he voluntarily terminate his agreement after March 1st, that we strike the condition that he cannot work in the state of Texas.
So we have a motion by Mayor Protem Heinz, do we have a second?
Second.
So a motion, second by Councilmember Scott Rose, the motion is to authorize me to amend his contract under 3.2 to add that after, if he voluntarily terminates his agreement after 3...
March 1st.
Or before.
That after March 1st, then that, then we strike the rest of the statement, the, did not work for a government entity within the state of Texas for one year.
He's saying after, you're saying on or before, I don't know what the first legal terminology is.
The motion, the motion that Tom has said is after March 1st, that if he does it before, then it's, he can't work within the state of Texas. That if he does it before, then he's, he can't work within the state of Texas. After March 1st, then he can work anywhere.
Yes.
That's the only thing we're changing. Any questions on the motion?
I'd motion to amend it to the immediate counties surrounding Williamson.
So I have a motion by, amendment to the motion by Councilmember Tanner Rose to change the, to instead of state of Texas, to Williamson County and surrounding counties?
Correct.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mike Snyder. Any questions on amendment?
So with that amendment, that would mean after March 1st, city manager could seek employment within the state of Texas other than Williamson County and surrounding counties. Okay. Okay.
Any questions on amendment? Call for vote?
Councilmember Scott Rose.
Which one are we voting on?
The amendment.
Amendment. Whether you want to amend the original motion, and then debate that motion.
Nay.
Mayor Protem Heinz.
Nay.
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Mayor Gahl.
Nay.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Nay.
Councilmember Tanner Rose.
Aye.
Motion, amendment for the motion fails four to three. Now we have the motion. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Call for vote?
Mayor Gahl.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Heinz.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott Rose.
Aye.
Councilmember Snyder.
Nay.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Tanner Rose.
Nay.
Motion passes five to two. Next item on the agenda is 8C, consideration of possible action regarding ordinance 07001.00 on financial disclosures. I've got one person signed up to speak, or two people. Robin Sutton.
Mayor, I should let you know, the reason I placed this item back on the agenda, because it's an ordinance amendment, and your charter, the city charter, requires two readings. So, you know, I, I just wanted to make sure that you are adopting in accordance with your charter. I fully intend to comply. I think it's a great idea, but in order to effectuate the actual disclosure, you need to, pursuant to your charter, have two readings.
Okay.
And unfortunately, you guys at 2:00 AM at the last meeting forgot to wait the second reading.
So this is, even though it doesn't say it's a second reading, this is in fact a second reading?
It's a, it's a second reading.
Just trying to wrap my brain around that, because I didn't know that this could be put back on the agenda by the city manager, again, new to all this. And it causes doubt in the citizen of Hutter that he doesn't want to fill out a financial disclosure. Most of the people that talk to me question the authentis, authenticity, sorry, and the transparency. And when this was approved last week and voted on, the citizens felt victorious, right? You can laugh at me all you want.
Mayor, the comment that I made to the city attorney is that by charter, that document was, that amendment was not approved to-
So you're taking up my time? Do I get to take up your time?
Let, let her finish her comment.
Okay. So if you, that we voted in and want to represent us, you have to hold him accountable. We don't know where all this money's going. We know for a fact that city attorneys got 2.37, $2.3 million in two years, and they're holding information from us. We can't get public records, and that's crap. And I'm saying crap because I want to be polite. So what are we doing? Councilmember Rose, what are you doing? Who are you protecting? Councilman, or Mayor Protem Heinz, who are you protecting? Who are you working for? Snyder, who are you working for? Councilman Snyder. Mayor Gahl, who are you working for? Are you working for us? Councilman Gordon, who are you working for? Are you working for us? Councilman Martinez, are you working for us? And Councilman Rose, are you working for us? And we want to see it. We want to see the numbers. We want to know where our money's going, because we're the ones that are paying the price for irresponsible growth in this town and our entire history being destroyed. So you tell us who you work for, and your vote tells us. And if you don't want to vote for financial closure tonight, we will vote for it in June, and we will take it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Boss, 118 Reinhardt Street. Actually, John Otis actually answered my questions, because I was trying to figure out why we were bringing it back up, but I appreciate that. Other than that, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. I will have discussion.
So, Mayor, I passed out a thing earlier, so when this first came up, my ignorance to the second reading caused me to dig in a little bit more. And what I'd like to do is see, and I guess the city attorney would have to help me with this, is I like this, there's been some concern about, from the city manager, and I can appreciate his concern regarding having to list your dependent children on the financial disclosure. So when I got to looking at that, I noticed, I came across Local Government Code, Chapter 145, which is specifically written for the financial disclosure by and standards of conduct for local government officers. And so this particular chapter applies to municipalities with a population of 100,000 or more. And the second part I gave you all was, in the code, it says you have to refer to the Texas Ethics Commission on what you can require on a form. And so what I would like to do, propose, is the city of Hutter, the ordinance, when it comes to this particular issue, that we follow Local Government, Chapter 145. Even though it's over 100,000, we can, we've got big-time development coming, we can act like big-time people in my mind. And some of the things, when it comes to dependent children, how it differentiates it, which I think is going to be helpful, is that a financial statement must include an account of the financial activity of the individual required by this subchapter to file a financial statement and an account of the financial activity of the individual's spouse, no change there, and dependent children, if the individual had actual control over that activity for the preceding calendar year. So if a person were to have a trust in their children's name, an LLC in their children's name, anything that they had custodial authority of, they would then be required to list their dependent children. And so if they, if someone had a problem with putting their children down there, then they could just not put business entities in their name. I like to add, add this, the other thing that the big change this adds, is it would add the city attorney to this. And it dawned on me when I was reading through this, that I never thought, no offense for leaving you out, but I never thought that a city attorney probably should be included in the financial disclosures as well. So I'd like to add that also.
Set a motion for you making that in form of a motion?
Well, yeah, more of a discussion how I'm going to this. The way I got to all this is when I started reading through it, when you, once you hit 100,000 in population for all those other cities, city attorney has to, city manager has to. I checked around, Round Rock, their city attorney does, their city manager does, their assistant city manager does, other cities do their department heads. So I'm not asking for all that, because like I said last week, I think that's up to our city manager to determine. He controls his employees, that's not our job. But, so I guess what I would say for my motion is that I would like this on the second reading to approve the changes to the financial disclosure following the Local Government Code, Chapter
So if I understand right?
Hold on, he's got, he's got a motion on the table. So a motion to approve the changes to the financial disclosure, to approve the, approve the second, final reading with changes. Make sure what you're trying to get at is you're saying to approve the second, approve the second and final reading with changes to financial disclosure.
By following Local Government Code, Chapter 145.
By following Local Government Code, Chapter 145?
Yes, sir.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, so I can ask my question.
A motion by Councilmember Snyder, a second by Councilmember Gordon.
Was it 145 is the chapter?
Yes, sir.
So it sounds like if city manager's dependent children do not have any kind of trusts or businesses or anything in their name, he would not have to list them on the thing, so-
Well, that applies also to-
That would apply to us.
Yeah, that would apply to everybody.
That would apply to all of us.
Right.
That'd be the city attorney and anyone else who's in there.
What the statute says is, the individual is required to finance, to file a financial statement and account for the financial activity of the individual's spouse and dependent children. So if the dependent child doesn't have any financial activity, you don't have to disclose them. Now, once they get in high school or college, if you've given them a credit card or a bank account, you're going to have to account for that.
Well, you left out the part, if the individual had actual control over that activity for the preceding calendar year.
Yeah.
If your son uses a credit card, I mean-
No, no, it, the, the individual isn't referring to the dependent child.
Right.
It's, it's, it refers to the office holder and anybody else you apply it to.
If I had, if I had actual control, so if my 19-year-old dependent child has a credit card, and they're out using it, that's not the financial activity that they're talking about. They're talking about if I had control over that activity.
And that would be true, if you're either a cosigner on their checking account, or the credit card is either an extension of your credit, or you had to guarantee it to get them.
That may be, I figure this-
No, no, that, that is the law.
I'm just saying, if the city of Irving can file this, and all the other 100,000 cities, this has got to be a lot better than what we just had. That way we don't have to worry about four-year-olds having people track them down, but 17, 18, 19-year-olds that are borrowing money and-
Yep. The other clarification question I had, so you requested to add city attorney. We currently employ, you know, get us in Lockridge as our city attorney, and so who would, my question would be, who would that include? Would that include whoever officially represents us? Would that include our assistant city attorneys who are employed? It would include them as well?
Well, it would depend on the motion.
Or, okay.
I would say city attorney, I wouldn't say it would be assistant city attorney.
Okay.
But it would be city attorney Bingham and Shawneasy. And I'm sure, do you guys do this for bigger cities? Do you guys represent bigger cities?
We don't do this for anybody, but we don't have a problem doing it.
I mean, as far as, for a municipality in Texas, do you guys-
We're not, we're not officially city attorney for anybody over 100,000. I mean, we do work for them, we're just not officially, they're city attorney.
So is there a form?
Sorry, go ahead.
According to this, we would have to, we would have to direct the city secretary to update our form to reflect the changes that are based in the Texas Ethics Commission. And I think that's important for me, is these are guidelines by the Texas Ethics Commission, so it's not like Mike Snyder made something up.
For cities over 100,000.
For cities over 100, but like I said, we're-
And we're at 35,000?
We're about to borrow a quarter billion dollars, and so when we start borrowing a quarter billion, someone-
Well, we're not borrowing a quarter of a billion dollars.
Someone's selling bonds for a quarter billion.
Not someone, she told you, it was the Arizona Industrial Development. The city is not borrowing a quarter of a billion dollars.
The LGC is, right?
No.
Okay, we'll get that later.
Can we get back on track?
Okay, so, so we've got a motion in a, in a second.
I've got one follow-up question. It's the Local Government Code that states the city attorney, not the motion, right? Is the city attorney named in-
Uh, yes.
-Chapter 145, or is that part of your motion? I think they're named in 145.
No, he's in there, under section 145.002, when they define municipal officer as defined as a mayor, a member of the governing body, the municipal attorney, or the city manager of a municipality. So by following section 145-
It puts the city attorney in there, not the motion per se.
And that way, if it changes, something in Texas changes, it would automatically filter through to our form, and we don't have specifics in there, we're just following the chapter.
Yeah, see, in our, so our form, I, I had some questions, you know, when I went back and looked at it last week, and I was like, why does it have this, or why does it have that? And so obviously, our form is outdated. And so, I mean, I totally agree that we should go by what is on this and meet the standards.
You've got minor children, has no money, there's no reason in their name should be on there.
Right. And exactly.
Any other questions? Call for vote?
Mayor Gahl.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Heinz.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott Rose.
Aye.
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Tanner Rose.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to one. With that being said, we have no more items on the agenda, therefore I will adjourn this meeting at 9:19 PM. We are adjourned.